Six o'clock, we'll call the meeting to order. Councilmember Hannah, do we have a quorum, sir?
We do have a quorum.
For the record, if you will notate, councilmember Snaby is absent. Mayor Bertin Proctor is remote. And the rest are in person present. Thank you all for being here this evening. We do have an agenda before us. Council, yield the floor for a motion.
Next motion, we accept the agenda as distributed.
Second.
Motion to second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, sir?
Aye.
Thank you, council. At this time, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to move into presentations. There are multiple presentations, one, two, three, four, and five. There's no discussion from the elected or the public. This is presentation from our staff only. At this time, we'll move on to presentation number one. Mary Burgess, Plating and Belting Director.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Elizabeth Burgess, Belting Director. So, as you see up front right there, I wanted to put this slide first so that we can take a look at what is the median income in Jasper versus the median income in Atlanta. The next two projects I'm going to be talking about are projects that are seeking the, excuse me, Department of Community Affairs Low Income Tax Credit Housing Initiative. So, in order to move these forward, they have to have the appropriate zoning in place for them to submit their applications, which are due on May 17th. So, as you see, Jasper's median income is just shy of $47,000. And then Atlanta's median income is just shy of $70. I put this up there because for purposes of this type of program, we are working with Atlanta. So, I've been thinking about this while the last couple of weeks. And one of my recommendations reflects, kind of, will bring this together. So, the first one we have is located off 100 Darnell Road. It is 4.73 acres, currently zoned C2. And they're going for the MFR multi-family residential zoning. So, the existing conditions up there, it is vacant. It has 341 linear feet of frontage along Darnell. The public utilities are in the area and are to be determined. So, some of the things that are surrounding, this is a very vacant area. There's mostly county around surrounding this property. You have to the north, we have rural residential, and that's in the county. To the west, we also have highway business that is vacant and in the county as well. To the east, we have agriculture, and you can see there's a single-family home on there. And then lastly, the portion that backs right up to Kroger, which is in the city, and that is zoned C2. So, as with everything, we compare this to our future development map. And this is part of the, excuse me, the West Jasper Gateway Corridor off of 53. So, as you're going past, if you're going past the Kroger in Home Depot Plaza on your right, Darnell is just by Bubba Q's. So, as I stated before, this is going to be a DCA project, or that is what they were rezoning for. They originally asked for 48 units, but that does not comply with our zoning. So, they are only allowed to have 38 units. These will be located within two buildings. And they're looking for 60% to 80% of median income for this project. And so, moving forward with the typical development patterns, as you guys recall, development patterns are commercial, multi-family residential apartments, then usually single-family attached, and then moving further and further out with the suburban, like, single-family homes. So, this is going to be actual affordable housing, also known as workforce housing. So, it is meant to house the workforce such as firefighters, police officers, teachers, things that, couriers that do not make as much money and may not be able to afford those market rates. So, here you see the layout. You see the two apartment complexes. And in the middle, you have the amenity center, which is going to be a playground, a pool, fitness area. And then they have the open space that is going up to the back of that commercial area. So, with all of our projects, we have the recommendation and the approval with the normal conditions, that I've added a couple though. Maximum number of units can't go over 38. Traffic impact assessment will be completed. And the buildout will have improvements to Darnell Road. I had the chance to speak with the county today to make sure that their standard for roadways are the same as ours. And they sent me their spec, and it is the same as ours. So, they will be, they will have to improve Darnell up to their northern boundary. So, from 53 to the northern boundary. So, they'll have to do the road, curb gutter, and sidewalk as well. Another condition was, so they are promoting the 60% of median income, which comes out to be roughly $42,000 to $47,000. And so, one of the things that I put in is that out of the 38 units, 10% will be at the 40 AMI. That will allow those people who make, say, $27,000 a year, which are our service workers that make roughly $10 an hour. So, we know here that we are starving for service workers. We've had three restaurants close just this year because they cannot staff. We have Publix coming in, we have Chick-fil-A coming in, and we have three other out parcels and additional commercial locations that are moving in. So, we need to be able to stop importing our employees. As you know, we import and export. So, we want to have our people stay here, live here, work here, and spend their money here. So, lastly, the condition is a reversion clause. The owner of this property has stated that if it is not bought by this applicant, then they, within one year, April 25, that it will revert back to C2.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving on to presentation number two.
So, this parcel, again, is a, they are going for the DCA funding as well with the same parameters. So, this is located off Philadelphia Road. It is adjacent to Roland Meadows, that the D.R. Gordon Project that is located over there. And they are seeking to rezone from RA to MFR, multi-family residential. So, existing conditions, this is a lot is 25 acre. It's the one with the red star on it. Public utilities are located within the area. It has almost 1,200 linear feet along Philadelphia Road, and it's currently vacant and sloping. One thing that's unique to this property is it does have a 300-foot easement, electrical and gas easement through the center of it. So, across the street is RA. It is that other large pasture parcel. To the east is the Roland Meadows, like I spoke of before. To the west is, right now, it's C2. It has a vacant residential unit on it. And then behind it, it backs up to the Mobile Home Park, which is part of the county. So, as before, with the future land use map, this does fit in with the same development pattern. We have commercial going to multi-family residential. Roland Meadows is single-family attached, and then so on. So, the development pattern is there. And this one, again, is seeking the 60%, 80% median income. And they're looking to also fill in that, what we're calling the missing middle of the housing supply up here. So, this is what they have provided for their financials. It does give a breakdown of what the rents would be. They do have about six market units. And you always like to have an intermittent mix of market units within affordable housing product so that you don't have those stagnant tenants. And it also gives a sort of a, more of a neighborhood feel, I guess. That's what the documents say anyway. So, as you can see, the square footage is, you know, the three-bedroom, two-bath is 1,200 square feet. That's a pretty good-sized unit right there. And that would be renting for somewhere around $1,200 a month. So, the rents are compatible. But again, this is why I think that we need to have a couple, 10% of this one as well with a 40% AMI to get those people that are just below that, you know, $40,000 mark and that can also be able to get some of those, you know, into those one-bedroom, two-bedroom units. So, these are some examples of their work so far. They have one in Ball Ground, also called Abington, is what they're proposing here. So, they've been doing this for several years, just like the other guys. They have their own management company. They do not sell these. They hold on to the complexes. So, they, they allow the, they have the same management company. They have the same landscaping company that does all of their work. I did swing by the one in Ball Ground, and it is extremely tidy and clean. And I was very impressed with it. Unique designs, and, well, the one on the right's unique. The other one just looks like a car complex. But, hey, so they're not, they are familiar with how this works. And so, considering that Jasper has not been awarded a DCA Low Income Tax Credit Housing Initiative in over 30 years, there's thinking that we are getting primed for that. So, this is the layout. So, they are proposing to do this in two phases. So, there are 60 in the first phase and 60 in the second phase. And as you can see, right in the middle there, you have the, no, it doesn't do it. You have the easement I was talking about. So, they've got the parking located in the easement. And they do have the two entrances because they are over the four-unit threshold. So, they will be building into the eastern part of this with 60 more units. So, again, it is three apartment buildings. They have amenity center and open space, walking trails. So, again, with this one, the maximum number of units is 60 units per phase for a total of 120. Now, if you recall, multi-family residential allows eight per unit, per acre. So, this is much less than the total that they would be allowed. So, if this by chance does not get the DCA award, they will not be able to build this out at 200 units unless they come back and ask for the maximum density. This is only at 120 units. So, 120 units on 25 acres. Again, I'm asking for 10% of those units to be at that 40% threshold, so the high 20s, to get those people in the service industry the ability to come and be able to apply and meet the criteria. And of course, all of our standard, this one also, I'm sorry, I, the traffic impact statement is, has to take into consideration all 270 units that will be located to the north. So, if they are, if they have to do a turn lane or something like that because of the 270 units, then they will have to do that. Just to make sure that we are getting the safest area up there possible. As you know, Roland Meadows has about 2,200, I think 2,200 linear feet of frontage as well. And they are doing sidewalks along the entirety of that. So, they will have sidewalks, these people will have sidewalks. And then when the commercial develops, we will also have sidewalks there.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving on, item number three for presentation over.
So, this one-
Ms. Burgess, I believe it's labeled incorrectly. It says four, is it three?
Oh, that, I'm sorry, that's for my agenda. I didn't change the numbers.
We're good.
Okay, so this one is a modification of ordinance number 2021-25, also known as Jasper Village or Haley Village. They need to modify their conditions of approval. So, this was the layout that was originally approved. It was 100 single-family homes, 99 townhomes, 11.2 acres of commercial with the three access points. So, if you look at this and you look at that number one, which is on the left side, far left side, that was going to be an access off of Appalachian Court. But they did not buy that 6.69 acres over there. So, it is currently zoned PUD, but it is not part of this PUD. So, the person who owns it cannot use their property until it is properly zoned. So, that's one of the reasons we're here, and also because of the changes made to this. So, these are not considered minor changes, so we have to go through the process again. So, this development is not new. I know some people may have read that this is a new project, and these are new additional ones. But again, this was approved in 21. So, this is a plat that they have that is approved. The largest area being where the residential is scheduled to go. And then the property that abuts Philadelphia and 515 are the commercial. So, the commercial is now up to 16 acres. They have the two access points and currently 102 family, single-family homes. Just so you know, they do not have approved site plan. The site plan that I'm about to show you does not meet the lot layout that you see there. So, there will be adjustments to it. So, this is the layout that they currently have. And so, some of those lots do not meet the frontage requirements, which were 50 feet. And they were supposed to be 50 by 100, with the largest unit being 2,400 square feet allowed on those. So, these were some of the renderings that they brought to the last, to the planning commission. So, as you can see, they are out there promoting this commercial. They're thinking there's going to be hotel and several other retail areas, and also a big box store as well. So, you see the 100 homes and amenity center is going to be behind all of that and buffered by the commercial development. And that's another one there. So, some of the things that have come up while we are doing our site plan review on this project, we had Kimlin Horn review their traffic impact statement. And we had them adjusting the roadway over there to fit the needs indicated by the traffic report. So, there's been some lengthening, an addition of lanes and turn lanes, and acceleration and deceleration lanes to accommodate this area. They do currently have an LDP. As you recall, we do not normally issue LDPs without an approved site plan. But during this, we, the person who was selling the property was in poor health, and we, she wanted to sell the property, and I can't really blame her, so she could go and enjoy that extra bit and not have to worry about this. So, they do have an LDP. They were allowed to log it. They were not allowed to stump it. And they had to put up the silt fence all along the creek area, because there's two creek areas. And they had to post a bond as well. So, I was taking as many precautions as possible in order to make sure that we were properly protected. So, stat recommendation is to amend the ordinance to remove the parcel 030, 030B, 031001, and revert that back to the R1 Low Density Single Family Residential that it previously had. Another thing that will change is the future commercial development must adhere to the current, at the time of the site plan's middle, zoning ordinance. And that is just to make sure that that commercial is developed with the best ordinance that we have at that time. So, reflecting traffic, reflecting stormwater, setbacks, landscaping, so forth. All other conditions shall remain.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving on to the next item for presentation, item number four.
Yeah, I apologize if I crashed you.
You're good.
So, these are a couple of items that are not new to you guys. We've gone over them several times, so I will go through them briefly for... So, these were kind of things that were buttoning up just to make it a little bit clearer on exactly what needs to be done through site development. So, the first one is for lane disturbance permits. Just putting it in, so it's not just a policy. It's now part of the ordinance that an LDP will only be issued with an approved site plan. The second one is requiring the baseline for stormwater plant management plans, which is a Georgia Stormwater Management Manual as the minimum requirements for stormwater management. We are creating the payment in lieu of sidewalk policy, which we went into about. They are allowed to apply for payment in lieu if they have some extenuating circumstances. For example, the, it would create an unsafe area, the slope is too steep. Or like, for example, the gas station at the corner of West Church Street and Joe Lane, where that frontage is going to be taken up by the Route 53. So, if they put down a sidewalk, they're just going to tear it back up. So, with that project, they can do the payment in lieu. I did take the additional landscaping that'll make them put it all around the entire site so that they'll be held to that landscape as well. Also, we were adding wine to the package store classification. Currently is, it only states liquor and beer in the package store classification. So, we added wine to clarify that. Again, package stores are only allowed in the C2 district. And lastly, we have the outdoor lighting specifications that would prohibit wood poles to be used in residential subdivisions and commercial and industrial. That is-
Thank you, ma'am.
And that is it.
The one item on here currently for all, Ms. Colton, on the agenda, presentation number four, annexation 490 living lane. That also need to be presented just for facts only.
So, well, we are continuing it to a date certain. That date certain will be, you guys will see that at the public hearing, that is the June 3 meeting. There was a notification error.
Awesome, thank you. All right, council, with the presentation portion being over. Dr. Proctor, just want to make sure you're still with us and can hear us. I can't hear you. Can you hear me? Can I get a thumbs up if you can hear me?
I'm here.
There you are. Thank you, sir.
All right.
At this time, we'll move into the new business section of the agenda. Item number one, discussion with consideration of amendment to ordinance 82.2, billing delinquency penalties for flat loan or mailing late notices. Lindsey Williams.
Good evening, Mayor, and I'm here for y'all. An amendment to ordinance 82.2, billing, delinquency penalties. This is for our late notices that we mail out each month. As much people know, your mail is a little bit slower these days. So, we've come to realize that sometimes our late notices are not getting there till after that. So, what we're wanting to do is amend the ordinance where we take away billing late notices. And we have spoken with other municipalities and learned at some of the conferences that most utilities do not bill late notices anymore. What we would do is add a statement to our utility bills stating that this is the only notification that they will receive. And we will still continue to cut off on the 20th of the month. But this way, it'll, it'll cut down on some of them. Like, we get, we'll get several calls of customers because they didn't get their notices in time and things like that. And we do strive to mail our water bills earlier now. So, we try to get them out by the 15th of the month, which is given, which is an additional 10 days to what's required in our ordinance so to get our bills out sooner to our customers. We're also encouraging our customers to sign up for email billing so that they can get their bills on time. So, we wouldn't want to start this until maybe July so that we can get our bills updated and have our customers time to realize that they won't be receiving these notices anymore.
Thank you, ma'am. Council, this is the discussion and consideration of it. A couple of things that Ms. Williams mentioned. The bills are sent and mailed no later than the 15th. Ms. Lindsey Williams, what day are they due on?
They're due on the 10th of the month. Unless that falls on the weekend, then that will go to the following Monday.
So, they're being mailed out no later than the 15th, due on the 10th of the following month. We will add a statement on the bill, just as other providers do, whether that be electricity or other municipal services, saying that's the only statement you'll get, the only bill. Same cutoff, there is no change in the cutoff procedures for our city. That date range remains the same. Customers are encouraged to sign up for the email billing or auto draft, I believe that's an option. So, they have multiple options to pay. And this is in line with the conferences and education that our staff has attended from other municipalities. Council, this advanced to the regular council meeting. Is there any other information you may need? And is this a consent agenda item?
As someone who just signed up with the email billing or notifications, one of those notifications sent out, is it just the invoice and late, or one or the other?
So, you mean the late notices, where the late notices are out? So, with our bills being due on the 10th, we mail late notices out on the 11th. And then you have until the 20th to make that payment before you're disconnected.
With the email, though, it wouldn't send you that email?
The email goes all back, but you could, we will still be able to email late notices. And we just wouldn't be mailing them, actually, pre-able mailing them, so.
Any reason for this not to be placed on consent agenda? Is there any concern?
I'm trying to think of this. What was the recommendation of administrative committee? Or was this even discussed administrative?
What?
I don't remember. I think we recommended it happen.
Yeah, that's what I hear.
I can't remember if we recommended the, be on consent.
Is there any additional information?
I would suggest we put it on consent agenda. I don't see a lot of discussion that needs to fall under this. I hope it encourages folks to go to an email billing. I know everybody can do it, but it's difficult to get bills right now.
All right. Thank you, council. We'll move on to item number two, discussion and consideration, fiscal year 2023 operating budget amendments. Ms. Williams.
I know that last month we had some budget amendments as well. And so, while reviewing our track report from our auditors, we came across some changes that needed to be made, which caused us to have some additional budget amendments, which these are due to a New Gatsby rule, 96, which is subscription-based information technology arrangements. So, the auditors have made these, I think there's just a couple of entries that are in your packet to make these adjustments for that New Gatsby rule.
So, there are a few listed, I believe five, council. This was in the agenda presented. Any additional information, council, we may be looking for?
Tug of, okay. Dollar.
So, no, it's not really, it's kind of a watch. It just, you just have to report this.
And then I would suggest to go on consent agenda.
Any objection to consent? Thank you, council. Moving on, new business item number three. There is a potential conflict with myself in this agenda item, so I'm not going to be part of the discussion. I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Colton.
Tonya, you want to come on up?
Okay.
Tonya is actually going to present this as a part of the municipal court, a change in the potential software that they are using there. Tonya, go right on ahead.
Okay, we have, you should have a contract in your paperwork. We've already sent this to the city attorney. He's already looked through it, and we, I think there was a word that was off that we didn't change at all that was there. I found out recently at one of my conferences that our current software is changing to what, kind of what Simulacrum at the Police Department has. And I'm ready to make a move to get to something that's going to work for us better. I feel like this new software, which is I3- I feel like this new software, which is I3 Verticals, or she used to be called CJT, is going to work better for us. We'll have access to probate court's information as far as tickets, City of Canton, several other agencies in our area that... Because we get calls all the time, people looking for tickets. And that's going to help us out a lot. But it's going to actually be a little cheaper than what we're using now. It's going to be $7 for our shop action, which there's no upfront cost to the city. So that's going to be a plus. They said they could have us up and going in around a month's time if we pass up, do this. I'm just asking that for an approval if we can and so we can get this moving.
So if I may add, when Tanya says that, you know, there is no cost, these are customer-driven fees that are paid by folks who are paying a ticket through the court system. There is no cost to the city for the software. It is completely covered by the customer. This may should have gone after the SmartCop presentation, which Chief Dawkins will be bringing to us next because there is a correlation with that software. This I3 IC... Excuse me, I3 Verticals. I can never say that correctly. Is the only software that is compatible with the software that the police department is looking to move to. And their move is driven by numerous issues that they are having. Not being able to get tickets printed, not being able to upload information. And, you know, you need to be able to do reports and you need to be able to provide that information to the folks that need that. And without being able to do that, that has driven them to find a new software, which you will hear next. But the important part is, is that this software is compatible. The other court reporting programs that are out there are not compatible with the program that the police department is looking to move to.
Also, the current software we have, I found out that when they make this change to the cloud-based program in the fall, they'll be increasing our costs. So that's going to be another plus for switching.
We did review it in committee and recommend put it on consent agenda, just because no cost, like we're saying, no long-term contracts that we need to sign, so.
So I will ask, I know that that is something that we talked about in the Public Safety Committee. With the potential conflict of interest, I think just to be completely transparent, we may want to actually have this on regular agenda and be able to discuss. Dr. Proctor would actually present this on Monday evening and do the call for vote and things like that, just to make sure that we are being completely transparent throughout the process, if no one has any objection to that.
I understand that, but I think it's wonderful. I am for consent agenda. This one is a little different.
Thank you. Is there any other information that Tanya or I can be preparing for Monday evening that you may need?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. For the public's information, the potential conflict is my employer is I3 Verticals, and so I am not part of that discussion. Thank you. Item number four, Discussion on Consideration of SmartCop Software Agreement. Chief Matt Dawkins.
Good evening. As City Manager mentioned, we are looking to change our software as well. We have been talking about it for probably, I don't know, three months at least, looking at different softwares. The one we currently have is not meeting what we need. We're having problems with the customer reports, tickets not printing right, information not being on the citation that should be on the citation, or crash reports. There's a slew of stuff. We have tried several times with this company to rectify the situation. The CEO of the company showed up and tried all different kinds of things to fix it, and it's just not working. So we looked at several different ones. Eagle, SSI, SmartCop, and Caliber. And what we did, we had them come in, do a demo. And instead of this being a chief decision, this was a officer's decision. They sat in, they got to look at the demo, they got to see how it works. And we based it off of, you know, they're going to be using it, so they want them to like it. Afterwards, they wanted to go with SmartCop. SmartCop does meet a lot of everything we need. They have been used in... The Georgia State Patrol has used them for several years now. They even come by the State Patrol bit and show us a live version of it instead of a demo version. We all know demos are not supposed to break, so we got the city live version. It was nice. It did exactly what we wanted to do. Florida State Patrol uses it. Oakwood PD, Oakwood, Georgia just went to it, so they're making their stamp in Georgia. This is a capital project that we had budgeted for. We have the total first-year cost would be about it would be $135,182. The due of signing of contract is 40% of that. Due on installation would be 50%, due on completion of training, 10%. And then the annual maintenance fee is when we go live, which is $13,396. The maintenance fee, there is a maintenance fee increase every year of 5%, which we budgeted for every year. But that also covers anything that they throw at us. If they change software or anything like that, it's not going to be on us, just the training part. We might have to have a small fee for that. The main thing here is my whole goal is to have a software that we're not having to come back to council every year. We want something that's going to be long-term. Officers like it. They seem to have been involved in this process. We do have... One thing we do have is a data conversion, but we'll have to take... SmartCop will take what's with our service now and get all our reports onto one thing. Right now, we're using three different softwares for evidence and reports, and that's not good. And that's just nothing anybody did anything wrong. It's just, oh, we're just... That's where we're at. So we have Eagle, we have who we have now, and an RMS courtware service. So the goal is to get under one underdog. And that's what we can do with SmartCop. We would have to budget next year for the data conversion for Eagle. It's around $12,000, but that's nothing that we have to have right now. And this is a sister company or some company of that sort with Eagle, so that would be an easy data conversion. So that is where we're at.
Thank you, Council. Any additional information needed from Council that you asked for at this time? This has been presented to the committee, Public Safety, and discussed?
It has.
May I add, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
This has gone in front of legal. He has read it and approved of it. We did make the changes that he asked to be moved to change.
Well, Council, this was a budgeted capital improvement project for the police department. It's been discussed in committee, pushed up. Is there any objection to a consent agenda addition? All right. Thank you, Council. Next item on the agenda, number five, Discussion on Consideration to Approve GFA Drinking Water Stake Revolving Loan. Ms. Kendall.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So you'll recall in March, I brought to you another GFA loan package that was for clean water projects, which had to do with sanitary sewer system. Those were two critically prioritized capital improvement projects that we needed to go ahead and get started on that have been recommended by Goodwin Mills in K-wood. This evening, I come before you with two projects that have also received GFA funding for on the drinking water side. One of these is our water treatment plant, performing multiple upgrades to that plant, including replacing the filtration system, concrete restoration in multiple places, control valve replacement and automation, significant electrical upgrades at the plant, upgrades to the chemical containment and storage areas, and replacement of the turbidimeter system there. We also hope to accomplish some lighting challenges that are out at the plant as well in site security with new gate, security cameras, keypad entry, that sort of thing. All things that EPD has recommended very strongly. We work into that plant as a part of our sanitary survey that they do every other year. This project has been estimated at $2 million. The second project that we would have is very similar to what we presented on the clean water side. It is water distribution system improvements. And so it is not one project, it is multiple projects where Goodwin Mills in K-wood has, again, recommended we need to address sizing issues where lines are not sized appropriately, where we have issues with not being able to isolate sections of main off, changing out pipe where it is, you know, just old and beyond its useful life. And then doing also, it will result in pressure improvements throughout the system as well. So very critically important. That is estimated at $1 million and a half, and that will be all across the system. When we received the package from GFA, I sent that to our city attorney, David Sifin. He has reviewed and approved, and will be bringing the documents that he is required to prepare and sign with him Monday evening when we go through this. So I am asking for approval of the loan documents Monday evening so that we can get started on these important projects as well.
Thank you, ma'am. Council, this is the next step in investing in the infrastructure for the city. This will be advanced to the council meeting. I did not anticipate this being a consent agenda item. Is there any information you may need staff to collect between now and meeting?
I would like to add that similar to the clean water project, this is a very low interest rate, and we do benefit from a conservation aspect that GFA will award based on what your project is set to do. And so this is going to be at 2.28% financing, which is very low. This is something that we had budgeted for as a part of the 2024 budget process, including that in-depth service, so.
Thank you, ma'am. How many years?
20.
Council, reasoning behind it not being placed on consent or considered is the public needs to be aware of the investment the city is making in the infrastructure and the aging infrastructure. Moving on to the next item, Discussion on Consideration to Approve Change Order Number One, T. Sandco. Ms. Colver.
Thank you. So most of Council will recall that when the USDA project was bid out originally in 2022, there were two pieces to that. There was the plant expansion component, and then there was the 16-inch F1 force main, which takes the treated wastewater from the plant and takes it to our new outfall on Long Swamp Creek. When that project was bid out, the original alignment for the 16-inch force main was proposed to be constructed through a Georgia Power Utility Easement that ran kind of behind the treatment plant, the water treatment plant, and up north of Cove Road, where it would dump then into Long Swamp Creek. We pursued several easements along that route and got to a point with the largest parcel along the route that we were unable to secure that easement on. And so Turnip Seed started looking at alternative routes to see what we could accomplish perhaps faster. This is the route that we are currently constructing under today, which leaves the plant, goes up north to Bell Avenue, crosses over 53, and then goes along Old Cove Road. And then it will discharge into Long Swamp Creek, south of Cove Road. So while not significantly different in terms of distance, this new route has its challenges in terms of topography. It is significantly rockier. There is more clearing and grubbing that has to be done because we are no longer constructing in an established utility easement that has a hole line through it. And unfortunately, two years later, pricing has increased on the additional fittings, the structures that are needed now. With the topography challenges, there are some structures that we need because the force main will get to a point where it essentially starts acting as a gravity main because it is going downhill now. And so there are structures that are needed to kind of slow it down before it gets to Long Swamp Creek and the new outfall. T. Sandco presented this change order request to us at the March USDA meeting, and Turnip Seed took it and immediately started reviewing it for validity. It does add 60 days of construction time to this. We'll note that just because USDA allowed the plant contractor to start their work until we had the easement issues worked out, they would not allow T. Sandco to start on the force main work. And so he has just now started in December of last year. The change order amount is $907,000, and that is materials, labor, clearing and grubbing, tree removal, and I believe that's it. There is included in your package a comparison from 2022, where they had gotten a quote for the fittings that they needed for this project. And then they got real-time today quotes on those same materials. And you will see that everything has gone up 25% in cost. So between the additional cost in the materials, the structures that are needed, the additional work in time, which results in labor costs, that is why this change order is being presented this evening. And Turnip Seed has recommended and approved this. This is actually less than what they could have asked for because there are additional costs that they have been paying based on, excuse me, the delay that they are not passing along to the city. T. Sandco is in the middle of construction. They crossed 53 and the railroad. They are currently on Old Cove Road right now, constructing. They've jumped around a little bit just to get past some areas that they had to where there was a conflict, but they are well on their way. And so I am asking for approval of this change order so that we can continue this project.
Thank you, ma'am. Council, any additional information being requested?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I do have some concerns. I've already discussed them with Lindsey, and she should have that information for us before Monday's meeting, sir.
Yes, sir. Now, with that being said, Council, is this a consent agenda item? I would lean towards no. All right.
Was that a no?
Correct.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. All right. Council, with that being it, no other business? Want to adjourn?